Let's rise for the pledge, please. Fledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
President Dealey?
Here.
Vice President Schwartz?
Here.
Trustee Clements?
Here.
Trustee Hammond?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Okay, so I would like to start the evening by thanking the Haldane School Foundation. Laura Hammond and I were at their event on Saturday night and the quota I got was that they raised over $20,000, which is really amazing and really impressive. And the school foundation does great work for our schools and for our community. And I was also just really impressed at everyone who was there. And it's not just about the people who are there to give money, it's also the people who are there to volunteer their time and to come out and be supportive. So, a big congratulations to them and a thank you to them. I'd also like to remind everyone that Tuesday, May 17th, is our vote. I know it's not like a super exciting year to vote, but nonetheless, we'd like you to come out and vote. And you'll be voting on the budget, you'll be voting on a proposition for buses, and you'll be voting on three Board of Trustees seats that are up for reelection. And a note about absentee ballots for anyone who can't be here on May 17th, you can do absentee ballot. And I'm gonna have Julia just make any comments about how to do that if anyone doesn't know.
Sure. Absentee ballot voting, it's a two-step process. You need to apply, so you can get an application online, there's a link on the homepage of our website, or you can come into the district office and pick up an application there. If you want the ballot mailed to you, though, you need to have the application back to me before next Tuesday so that I can mail it to you in enough time to get it, so that you can get it back to me to be ready to be counted on election day.
And what's the deadline for applying?
The deadline to apply for an absentee, the day before the election.
The day before the election.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ann and Diana to give us our final presentation about the budget. We've been talking about the budget for so long now, I'm not even sure what's gonna happen at this part of the agenda when it's not there. But here is our final presentation, so turn it over to you guys.
Well, the final for this year.
For this year, yeah.
So, tonight is the hearing on the three-part budget. This is a state mandated presentation, so don't blame me for this.
For the drawing.
For the, right. It's really just a review. So, you know, this is the three-part budget, it's the official budget document, the items that are in here, items that the state has mandated that we provide. It is online, it's on our website. It is also available to view in each school building and the Butterfield Library. This is just really a summary of what we've been talking about for every meeting since January. The items that have gone into our budget this year through smart spending, we're calling it, to consolidate bus runs and re- reallocate, I'm losing my words, go on Diana.
Well, I'll leave it there. Okay.
So, what we looked at as we did last year and this year is we kind of go into the budget, we look at any of the places that we can refine, and we kind of, we move the funding to the places that has the most financial impact for our kids. In addition to this, we did get the GEA back, so you're actually seeing where the checks are, you're seeing some of the new things that we are trying, or maybe I should say the things we're trying to return to the budget, they're new to the budget this year, but they were actually, most of them returned. They were positions that had been cut. Some of the things you will see that are new, we are looking at creating a new position called the Learner Profile Coach, which is a .5 full-time equivalent. We're looking at one new co-curricular activity. We are looking at opening an alternative high school next September, but that's actually a money savings opportunity for us. We're also returning the middle school reading support, and we're continuing all the work that is related to our strategic plan.
Thank you. All right, so here, this is in my language, this is in numbers, so I can let you know about this. This is a revenue recap. Our spending plan cannot exceed our anticipated revenues. Our anticipated revenues for '16, '17, $23,098,874. As you can see, most of that comes from the tax levy, and that is at the tax levy limit. That's a .73 percent increase in the tax levy for next year. We are still using reserves, those are appropriated fund balance and some reserve money from our retirement contribution reserve, and then our state aid. This is from the final budget, this includes the return of all of our gap elimination money that has been held from us for the last several years. However, we are still at the funding levels from 2007, '08. Our foundation aid is still flat from those years, so although we're grateful.
Has not increased.
Has not increased. So, although we are happy to get what has been withheld from us, we still have a lot of work to do as far as getting that state aid restored. Tuition revenue, we have the same amount of students coming in that are graduating from Garrison, so that revenue is flat, except there's a slight increase in tuition that could be allowed in there, but I have kept that at the same level. And other revenues, which may be some interest earned, although that's not very big these days, and some refunds of prior year expenses, it's a very small part of the budget, but there are some revenues that we can expect. For our spending plan, our budget-to-budget increase is less than 1 percent, and our tax levy increase is at .73 percent, and the projected tax rate increase, which is different than the levy, is .78. In our district, because our budget is mostly made up of tax revenue, when our levy goes up, that's about the same amount that our tax rate goes up. The levy is the amount of money that's going to be collected from all the properties to balance the budget. The tax rate is your individual tax rate on your property based on what your assessment is. That's the difference between the levy and the rate. So, tonight, we need to present to you the budget in the three parts, the capital component, which is 14 percent of our budget, the administrative component, which is 11 percent, and the program component, which is 75 percent of our budget. Those are the breakdown of the administrative expenditures. It is Board of Ed, the business office and the superintendent's office, legal services, operations and maintenance, the supervisory part of operations and maintenance, that's not the total to run the district, it's not $44,000, that's for supervision. Central services, instructional administration, those are the administrators and their offices, their support in their offices as well, and the related benefits for the staff that are in this category. Program expenditures are teaching, special ed department, transportation, and the benefits that go with the staff in this program component. And the capital expenditures includes operations and maintenance, which is everything to run the facility, as far as you have your heating, electricity, the staff, debt service, and then the benefits that go with the staff that are in this component. Reminder of our vehicle proposition, two big buses we're asking for, they're $110,000 each, it's gonna be funded through a ban, we won't have any payment in the '16, '17 budget, it'll be in the '17, '18 budget, so the impact is very small because their debt that's being retired drops out over the next two years, and the new debt that comes on replaces that, so it keeps us at a constant level. Might go up a little bit, but not as much as, you know, buying a bus. Also, I just want to let you know that these buses are replacing buses, that one has already failed and one we anticipate it'll be taken out of service next year. The Butterfield Library levy, you'll see that on your tax bill again, it was approved by the voters in May of 2015. This is an annual levy that will be on your bill now going forward, it doesn't have to be voted on again, the proposition was that it would be approved annually. As I mentioned early, earlier, that the complete document is at all the school buildings, the district office, the Butterfield Library, and on the school website. And that is it for tonight.
Great. So, are there any questions from the board? I mean, we've been looking at this for many months now, and the board has unanimously approved the budget at hand. We're really excited about what Ann and Dr. Bowers have put together, really making lemonade out of lemons, so we really appreciate that, and we've all talked about that at length. But are there any additional comments or thoughts or questions from the board? We've all pretty good. Are there any comments from the public about the budget? Any questions?
So, there's video.
Oh, just, I'm sorry, sir, the, when you ask questions, if you can do it at the microphone, it's not for us, it's for the people at home, 'cause it's videoed, and they can't, they can't hear us.
I was just curious about the actual debt retirement that's taking place, since we're considering new buses to be added to the overall budget? If that total is actually coming off at the end of this, or this upcoming school year or not?
Oh, Ann.
Each year, when we purchase our buses, we purchase them with a bond anticipation note, which is, because our bond rating is high, we enjoy very low interest rates, so the bond anticipation note is paid off over five years, so old debt is falling off the books because we have had these bond anticipation notes for each year, and the new comes on. These, the debt for this proposition, we're not going to see the effects until '17, '18 because we sell the ban in July after the new year has started, so the payment won't be until the following, and more debt will come off from the last year of a five-year bond anticipation note. Also included in that debt are our construction bonds and our energy performance contract, that's all rolled into the line for debt included with the buses.
Okay. Go ahead, Mia.
Just one follow-up, then. So, the 1.2 million is what's coming off the books, essentially, as you said, rolled up into one?
The 1.2, or 1,215,344 is currently our debt service for the '15, '16 year. The '16, '17 debt service is the 1,237,777. That is all of the debt that I described that will be in the budget for '16, '17. This bus proposition will be in the '17, '18 line.
Right.
After other debt is paid off, I don't have that figure right here.
All right, I was just curious, like, what's actually coming off in terms of debt at the end of the year before we take on this incremental debt for the buses?
There's a final year of a previous bond anticipation note, and there are other debt, we have probably about nine issues that are outstanding, and, you know, I can certainly speak to the, our debt service schedule, but it's not something that's incorporated into this document.
I see.
Because it's many different issuances of debt over, you know, we have some 30-year bonds, we have some 15-year bonds, we have the energy performance contract, so there are different schedules for all the debt.
So, if you have the ability to actually provide the breakdown of the maturities of what's coming off the books each academic year?
Sure.
Okay. And if one wanted to have that, we would approach?
You would, you would call the district office, and Linda Dearborn is our records access officer, and you would fill out a FOIL request for the debt service schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other budget-related questions, thoughts, comments? All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, we have a number of things that I'd like to share with you tonight. We are going to be meeting with the finalists of the principal's search for the high school on Thursday. We have two different committees that will be coming together to meet with the finalists. We, our numbers of finalists have varied throughout the last week or so. We actually had two gentlemen that we were planning to bring to committee that actually were offered jobs in their home districts, so, but we also added one today. So, we will now have four potential candidates for the principal's position, they'll move, they'll meet with the students, and then they'll meet with the community, staff, Board of Education groups, so we'll have a group of adults and a group of students, they'll be toured, and then we'll get the feedback and make the determination following that. So, that's coming to a close.
Can we talk about a little bit now about the board and who's gonna be available to, is it now a good time to do that?
So, it starts at noon?
There will be a conversation that starts at noon, we'll have a light lunch for the people that are gonna be sitting in the committee, and we'll review the questions that have come to us. People will choose a question that they wanna ask, see if there's any questions about the process itself and the follow-up, and that's from 12 to 1:00. The interviews actually begin at 1:00.
And the idea is that there's an hour for each interview, right? So, from 1:00 to 2:00, you're with one finalist, 2:03, you're with the next finalist, so there's an hour allowed for each finalist?
For each of the interviews.
Yep. And then we can have two Board of Ed members on the adult committee?
Mm-hmm.
And it's a student committee, so do we want Board of Ed members flies on the walls on those committees, or is that inappropriate?
Well, I'm actually sitting in with the students, Julia will be sitting in with the adults, and so it's more just to see how everybody interacts and gets to know each other.
Right.
And so, it's up to you. You know, certainly the kids don't mind. And we're actually, we're probably looking at about 45 minutes worth of interviews and then a 15-minute break in between since we're going for four hours.
And the board will ultimately get to see everybody later?
Yes.
All right.
Well, the finalists.
The finalists.
So, the four would probably be called down to two?
Two, yep.
That's the ideal, and those two will be seen by the full board.
All right. So, Thursday's not gonna work for me, so I'm just gonna step back.
Thursday works for me.
Yep, Thursday works for me.
And I've held the date in my calendar and had expressed an interest in sitting in with the students, just as a, and believe it or not, I promise to keep my mouth shut. I understand that that will be a requirement of the position, I will do it, if that makes sense. I will.
So, maybe then Peggy should be the student fly on the wall?
Fly on the wall.
And Laura and I could do the adult committee.
Yeah.
And Evan, you're out, too, right?
And Evan and Margaret are unavailable.
Yeah, I actually blocked the day off. I mean, I was, if it wasn't gonna work out, it would be fine, but I did block the day off in my work calendar.
Perfect. So, I think we're good, then?
Can we get a, the new applicant?
Yes.
The resume?
Yes, we will have Linda send that tomorrow.
And then the second step, the final finalists, and that interview process will schedule as time goes on, I guess, so that we can all be there.
Right, so we'd look at like around the same?
Evening, something.
Evening, early evening, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Okay, tonight, we will be asking you later if you will approve the proposal that was sent to you regarding the Haldane Academy at St. Basil's, and as St. Basil's met with their board, this is also coming to you for approval, and we've, as you know, we've had many months of discussion and meetings, and we're kind of coming to some closure. There was some information that you wanted us to prepare for you, so Ellen and I met today, and you have a new document that shares the financials related to it for the number of students that will be able to be returned, the number of students that potentially will not go out, and the cost of the program itself. So, I don't know if you have any specific questions that we can answer for you.
I have a, just, as far as the capacity, are we, are we at capacity? Like, do you see, like, if there was room for more, is there room for more?
Yes. Right now, we have eight students that we anticipate will be attending, and we probably for the first year figured up to 12, no more than that.
Okay.
So, yes, and we actually will be, I'm meeting with the consortium early next week, and if there is a possibility that we could potentially have students that would be tuitioned in, or if there are students within the district that we haven't considered, they could be placed. So, I guess those are two options, but really, for the first year, 10 to 12 will be our maximum.
So, that eight students that you're talking about, it's four Haldane students and the five from St. Basil's that's talked about in the contract, or it's eight plus the five, or does that eight include the five?
There really aren't five students in particular from St. Basil's.
We're just leaving room for them.
Right. And so, it wouldn't necessarily have to be high school kids, it could be students that are living at St. Basil's in the dorms, and they send them here. They have sent them mainly to the high school, but I think there's, they're also looking at the potential of having younger kids start attending the district as well. But the maximum that, the maximum level that's in the bartered agreement is five students.
Oh, so those kids can come here? I thought those kids were going to the academy.
They could.
They could, but it could be either.
It could be either, and there may be some, they have some students that are homeschooled that may come only for a period of the time during the day at the academy, and if they wanted to join us for the environmental science part, they would just come in the afternoon. And then they have their education department within St. Basil's that would, that educates them.
Got it.
So, and it's possible that we could have one or two at a year instead of five, but the maximum would be five.
Can we talk a little bit about the staffing options?
Sure.
So, there's an option A and B?
Right.
So.
So, we have, one would be a teacher that would be predominantly there for, we have, we have multiple teachers that would be coming in. The staffing option A would have somebody there every day for part of the day, we would have then people phasing in during the science and social studies component, which is the equivalent of .2 or one, the equivalent of one day a week. We would have a full-time teaching assistant that would be there all the time. And then we would have, at different times, we're still trying to figure out what we're going, the specials and what that's gonna look like, and the PE, and so, that, A would be one teacher that would be predominantly there every day, and a teaching assistant, and then other teachers coming in and out. B would be one teacher that's there for three full days, there would be another teacher that would be there for two full days, then we would have the math and social studies phasing in and out, and then the full-time teaching assistant. So, it depends on how things play out, who we actually hire, if there's people that are within the district that are interested, there are a number of options.
And when you're thinking about .2 positions, I mean, is that like a retired person, or is that a new teacher that doesn't have a full-time job yet?
It could be all of the above.
Could be anybody.
Yeah.
And the transportation, food services, all that's, all of those items that are provided by Haldane, do we see those as, you, I guess you don't see them as any additional costs?
There would be, probably the only thing that would be an additional cost would be, if we're not already over there for a reason, would be to have somebody transport the food there. And it's, we do, we do support the fields at St. Basil's, we have our kids that are playing soccer there, and so we do have groundsmen that are there on a regular basis during the sports seasons, and if there's other reasons, if we have somebody that's transporting something over there, that would come over. If they're going to Garrison for some reason, that would, we could place that on that bus, so it's, there probably will be some times that we actually just transport the food there, but we're gonna try to use other things that we can use as well. Or if somebody's on their way to Bosse's, they can swing through and provide it.
And the technology, there's obviously gonna be setup costs.
Yeah.
Probably.
And it will be, we'll prob, most of it will be our guys that will be going over, we'll do it internally.
Okay.
And you also mentioned, or you have listed that the PPS director and the dean of students are the ones kind of in charge. I guess I was thinking that the high school principal would somehow be in charge, but I guess not.
Well, it would be the principal that would ultimately be in charge, but if we have, if there's times where somebody would be going to the, for a reason, going and spending some time, that would probably be the dean and the PPS director.
Okay.
And it could be the high school principal.
The high school principal would be like the big overseer?
Right.
And any sort of day-to-day stuff might be more of the PPS people or the dean.
Right.
Anyone have any more questions about the, Ellen, do you have anything you need, you would like to share with us?
It's completely, uh?
Impromptuly?
Program, we've been working really hard on it for several months as a team, and it's been really a great project to see come alive, and we're very excited about it.
Yeah.
And I think the kids are excited about it, too.
And they will be, when we start the hiring process, they'll be helping us hire, they wanna be part of the hiring team, so.
But the difference is in the staffing option A, which is the FTE dual-certified teacher, and the staffing option B, more just like sort of who you find, is that to allow for that kind of flexibility? It's not like you think that there's one option that's better than the other, it's, I'm assuming, it's just, those are other scenarios you can imagine.
Right, right. Those are the ones that are, that we think are plausible.
Gotcha.
Okay, well, I think that's great, I definitely have a clearer picture.
Yes, thanks for putting that together.
Thanks.
You're more than welcome.
And that's on the agenda for approval later, so we'll just keep on going with our superintendent report.
Okay, so, for the next two, I'm actually gonna put them together, we are at the point that we are asking our technology integration and innovation specialist, Leah Horn, and we're also asking Simon Duder, our discover, create, and innovate teacher, if they wanna continue in that role. And as you remember, last year, they took a year's leave of absence from the positions that they were in, so they could decide if this was something that they really wanted to do. And they are on teacher, on assignment, so we don't have to reintroduce them to the, to their position because they just continue in it, but we, they did have to say yea or nay, and they both said that they would like to stay in the position. So, because we're not appointing them because they're So because we're not appointing them because they're already in the position, we're just letting you know that both of them wanted to stay in the position. We have voter registration for anybody who would like to vote, so they can, if they're not presently registered, on the 12th of May from 4:00 to 8:00 o'clock. So it will be, it'll be conducted in the corridor of the elementary middle school building. And you're going to be there, will you be there, Julia, or somebody else?
No, we have two registers.
Okay.
And that's just a register to vote for the school budget vote? That is not the global voter registration, so you can vote in primaries and in national elections?
That's correct. Although, I will have the registration forms that can go to Putnam County Board of Elections if someone wants one.
Thank you.
Okay, and then if, just a reminder that the annual district meeting will be held Tuesday, the, May 17th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 o'clock. And we're going to be first in the awards ceremony, then we're going to be coming here for a short while. We're going to be talking about the remainder of the mindset book, and then conducting business until the polls close and we hear the results of the election. And the budget, I should say, both the election and the budget. That's it.
Okay, committee minutes, buildings and grounds, there for everyone's reading pleasure. I don't know, Laura, you have anything burning to say about that?
We had a little involvement from the village in discussing parking issues. And we're very pleased that we had the parking committee chair from the village come to one of our meetings, along with a village resident. And we're going to start to come up with ideas and work together to help solve the situations on Mountain Avenue. So we're in the beginning stages. I know Dr. Bowers, actually, they canceled their meeting.
But then it was rescheduled for tonight.
Okay.
And I was interviewing, so Ann went in my place with Mike Twardy.
Okay.
So we'll be talking more about that. We're going to actually put that on a June agenda. And so we, we went to the meeting, we're going to be coalescing a committee to try to figure out some solutions. They, a couple of ideas were discussed at the meeting tonight. And then we'll have something, hopefully, to tell you a little bit more firmly in June.
But even since our last meeting, we have how many new, at least four or five new parking spots?
Six, I believe.
Six up by the district office?
Yes, we do.
So we're taking some baby steps.
But are those for public use, or are those just visitors to the district office?
It's, those are visitors, or public. I mean, if it's anybody, it's visitors mainly for the district office, but it's for visitors. So people who come to campus, not students.
So it's not going to help the student issue?
Not the student issue.
But we are, we are planning on opening parking next year. So in, and I'm sure your son's not going to be happy about the fact that it's happening this.
He'll be shocked.
He's going to say, why couldn't it have happened last year? Well, Catherine will like it, but we're probably looking at seniors and some, we haven't figured out exactly how that's going to work. We're going to wait for the new principal. But I think what Michael was thinking, somewhere between 20 to 25 spaces. So we are moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any communication from the public?
Oh, sorry, I just have a question. Hello?
Hello. I just wanted to know about the Haldane Academy, you know, if and when it's approved tonight. Will the proposal be made public and where so, where would we be able to see that?
You mean the proposal?
Well, the proposal that, yeah, that you provided to the board.
The financial, or the one with St. Basil's?
The one with St. Basil's, the.
Contract?
Yeah. The contract and as well as, because you know, I'm, you know, I'm trying to, I'm listening here, but I like to see stuff written down on paper, you know, like the different proposals, the different options, the staffing options, all of that stuff.
You ask me for it and we'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Ponton. This is my husband, Jamie, and that's our daughter, Audrey. We're here to discuss the busing changes that have happened recently to our, to our family, basically. We appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done, obviously, over the years, because, you know, we do watch these videos online. So we do try to keep up to date on everything that's going on. Our eight-year-old daughter is in the third grade. She goes to St. Columbanis. And she's been going there since kindergarten. We, she started getting picked up at 7:45, and she's been picked up at 7:45 every day since kindergarten. School starts at 8:20, and St. Columbanis is 20 minutes away. So she gets picked up at 7:45, she gets there about 8:05, and school actually starts at 8:20. So we got a call from Alisa and Mike Twardy, two weeks ago, I guess, and they said that she will now be picked up at 6:45 a.m. So she's being picked up at 6:45, which is kind of tough for an eight-year-old. We get her to bed at a reasonable hour, but she does have extracurricular activities, ballet, Girl Scouts, and she takes ukulele here at Haldane. And it's just tough, you know, getting her up at 6:00 o'clock is really hard. And we thought that, you know, it's not such a great thing because she has to take, there's another child in the, on the bus. Then they go to Putnam Valley High School. That child has to be at Putnam Valley High School at 7:05. And then she goes to St. Columbanis and arrives at about 7:15, 7:20. She sits in a car with an adult for approximately 30 minutes in an empty parking lot, which does not make me very comfortable. We like our bus driver, the one that we have on a regular basis, but we're not familiar with any of the other drivers. So the school opens at 7:45, where she enters the school at 7:45, and then, again, school doesn't start till 8:20. So it's another 30 minutes. So she's getting up an hour early to do really not much. So we kind of have a problem with that. I mean, we've tried it all last week, we did it yesterday, today, and she's not really, you know, doing too well as far as the extra hour of losing the extra hour of sleep. So do you want, I mean, we have a lot more to add to that, but.
Well, I think it's just the process for us because we understand that the board does a great job of communication in general. But with this, what we noticed in just researching things, there is no policy of notification, apart from knowing when bus routes are set up in the local paper for the school year. Any changes that take place, there's nothing formally written or communicated to any of the parents that have children that are bused out of district. So for us, that was a bit surprising to discover that, because we do understand that, you know, you do have the voice message that goes out when it snows as such, that sort of thing. But when there are changes that are going to be implemented, especially this late in the year, in the academic year, three quarters of the way through, you know, we get a call in the middle of the day at work saying, hey, this is going to change, you got four days to adjust, deal with it. That's what we found a bit shocking to us. I mean, we thought communication between parents and the board and the central school district would be a lot more robust or formalized. And technically, we couldn't find it, maybe you could tell us where to find it, but there's nothing in writing that actually spells out a policy of communicating with parents with children that are going to school outside of the district. And that's a concern to us, because what it says is that we're an afterthought.
And the rules, the rules change as we go, because halfway through the first grade, we got a call from Alisa, who's a dispatcher, who's lovely. We love Alisa. She's very communicative. I wake up at, you know, and I see her emails right there in the morning. She starts so early. But saying, oh, no more out-of-district transportation when there's no school for Haldane. So we're both working parents. We don't go in that direction to go to work. So unfortunately, we've had to, she's missed two days of school already this school year, unfortunately, because we maybe could get her there, but we can't get anybody there at 3:00 in the afternoon or 2:30 to pick her up. So that, you know, we didn't, we didn't take that too well, but we said, okay, you know what, we can deal with it. There's not that many days. One of us may take a vacation day just to transport her, which is ridiculous. But, so yeah, but my biggest concern, obviously, you know, concerned about the communication, et cetera, but, you know, this waste of an hour, and, you know, that's.
And also for the well-being of the kids, because in our time researching this, we've discovered that other parents have children who are, I guess you could say, suffering in a way, their well-being, their academic performance in school. All these things factor into the well-being of our kids. And if that's our driving goal here, again, I would love to see what numbers went into consolidation specifically. How much are we actually saving for those who are out of district exactly? Because I would be curious to see if we're talking a substantial chunk of change or just a slim amount that has a huge impact on the development psychologically and physically, I would say, to our kids long-term who are going out of district.
That's a lot of questions there. So pick any one.
Yeah, I mean, this forum isn't really a forum to discuss this topic. I'm assuming, I mean, the board was copied on your emails, so we're very aware of the issue. And this is a, in our opinion, at this point, this is a district office issue. So, you know, kind of, if you have questions about it, those questions should be going to Dr. Bowers and Mike Twardy, and you guys can kind of hash it out, and she can answer all of those questions for you guys. If there's something that comes out of that conversation that the board needs to look at, if there's a policy thing that we need to look at, then that is something that can come back to us, and we can certainly look at it. If there, if there is something that's missing in terms of policy, then that's something for us to look at.
As far as the board's concerned, though, are they aware of any policy that exists? Because we combed through the documents, and as far as we could see, unless we missed something, there wasn't anything that specifically addressed that, other than, you know, via phone. That's all we could find. What's published in the paper at the beginning of the year giving you the school routes, and that's basically it.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I personally don't know if there's a different policy. The policy manual is huge. So I certainly don't have it memorized, but it's definitely something we can look into and check into. And I'm sure Dr. Bowers probably has already done so, but.
One of the things, if you do want to contact me, we can sit down and we can, I can show you some of the school law. Most of what we do with out-of-district transportation is related to school law. And we follow the school law and the dates and the requirements. And so the policy, we're actually going to be shifting slightly the policy with transportation throughout the district. And so it's going to be something that will be forthcoming, and the modifications will be in writing.
So if we can, if we can meet with you, we can discuss that in greater detail then?
Sure.
Okay.
You're welcome. And the email, I invited you in, and I invite you in again.
Yeah, well, we thought we'd start here.
Yeah, we don't know what the process is, so we thought, get it out there, and then, once we're focused, we know where to go, and we'll go through the proper channels, of course.
So you're welcome to give me a buzz, and we'll set up a date.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thanks for your time. Okay, any further communication from the public? Okay, going into consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? We're talking about the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on April 19th, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, financial. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
I was just mentioning, I know we got a couple of these reports just earlier today, and I know I didn't get a chance to look through them, but if I'm the only one and you guys want to approve, we can, we can do that. Or Anna's told me we can pull them off, and it won't stop anything. We can just approve them next meeting.
Yeah, let's do that.
Because the one that didn't come through was the, it wasn't the central treasury report.
The appropriation, yeah.
So Julia, can we just?
Oh, and I actually did have some questions about that. I mean, not like, not like questions like I have concerns about it, but more questions for, that, about.
Question.
My.
Understanding.
Understanding.
Okay, so if we just kind of annex that one off?
Just the appropriation status report, item four?
Yes. Okay, any discussion about the rest of the items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, personnel. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? We've got some important stuff on here. I don't know if Dr. Bowers, if you want to talk about any of them, but we, tell me if I'm saying this correctly. We're appointing, so Julia Sniffin was an interim this year, technically, as our middle school principal. And the board feels like she's doing a fantastic job, and we'd like to appoint her to be an official principal, so no longer have the interim title, but she'll be a principal and going through the tenure track. And then the other two tenure announcements are Christian Huland and Melissa Seidman, both who have gotten rave reviews from their administrators. And the board is really excited about giving them tenure as well. I don't know if anybody has anything else to say.
A tenure question? So our administrators, the tenure is four years, and regular teachers, it's three years. Is that how that works?
No, it changed for everybody this school year. It's the first time that it's moved from a three-year tenure to a four-year tenure.
So Julia, she'll start all over again?
She'll be starting. Her year this year will be included.
Will count as one, so.
She has three more years.
She has three more years.
Well, then, it says July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2020.
July, that's when she will begin the, she's moved, she was.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
I have to check. The only thing I can think of, I think we did actually have a conversation of this, on this. I think we need clarification, something called Jerema credit, that if you are in a non-tenure track, but you fulfill the position, and then you get appointed in a tenure track, then you get the credit for the year. And I think that we actually did speak on this, where the administrators may not get a Jerema credit. Teachers will, but administrators, I don't believe do. So that's probably why it's the 14.
Okay.
Oh, because this year didn't count.
I think that, you know, now that I think about it, when we were talking about it, I think that was the difference. There is a change, there's a difference in the statute because the administrators do not get the Jerema credit. But I have, I'll need to clarify that.
Double check, yeah, obviously, yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unfinished business, going to buildings and grounds. We've kind of already touched on that. I don't know if you guys have anything further to say, but we're working on it. Everybody's working on it together, and we're just going to keep talking about it, right, and keep making improvements along the way. Any further communication from the public? You should sit like right there. Why do you even?
So I see here that, this is all great news. I mean, the personnel news is really wonderful news all around.
Yeah.
But I wanted to just double-check the appointment for Heidi Gessen. Is that, is that now a probationary appointment for her? Oh, okay, so more good news. All right, that's wonderful. And, and it's great news about Barbara Jennings as well. Is it, I don't know, is it appropriate for me to ask? Because I know that Barbara had been, had been a leave replacement filling Simon's.
Really can't talk.
No? Okay.
But I'll be happy to answer your question.
Fair enough. No, I understand, fair enough. All right, thanks.
Okay, going into new business, CSE, CPSE recommendations. Julia, do you want to?
Yes, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as indicated.
May I have a motion, please?
Show vote. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Going into the approval of the Haldane Academy at St. Basil's pilot program.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the Haldane Academy at St. Basil's pilot program, effective September 1, 2016.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion? Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, but just one, with going back to the positions, is there any thought or, or discussion of a possibility of an actual, like a point two? Let's say you had a point two, since it's so close, any discussions as far as an actual teacher, that's actually a full-time teacher at Haldane, maybe starting the day over there and then coming up here?
It's possible.
Is that, is that a possibility?
It is, yep. And we also ask for dual, dual or multiple certifications. So it's possible that we could have people with multiple certifications that could fill the roles as well.
Just anything that solidifies that position as, as a committed person to the district, so to speak, okay? As opposed to, like you talked about, like possibly a new teacher. And I've always been kind of against point four, point six new teachers in the sense of not because, because they always have one foot out the door, you know? Anyone who gets a point six position as a new teacher is probably always looking for a full-time position, rightfully so. So, you know, you mean, you understand what I'm saying? So, and I think that's. So, and I think that would be nice, as far as if you had, you know, I don't want to specifically name a teacher, but, I mean, if you had, like, one of, you know, a teacher that's, that's well-known and liked in Haldane, and the, the students down there get to experience that teacher as well, you know, that'd be nice.
The other possibility, and I'm not sure, we haven't even broached this subject, but there's possib- possibility that we could do something like BOSI's does, where you actually infuse some of the work into CTE, and that's how they are able to graduate kids that, that tend to go to BOSI's. So that's another area, we just haven't, we haven't even gone there yet in the discussion, so, I mean, part of what we can do is, is find out what they do to embed the, the course within the CTE component, and that's something that we may be looking at, especially in science. And so that's, that's, I think, if we are going to go that route, it would be very probable that we could use kind of the, the environmental science piece for science, especially since it's, we're looking at the living environment as the course.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of textbook.
Okay, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the textbook, Forensic Science Fundamentals Investigations by Mr. Anthony J. Bertino, second edition, Senge Publishing Company, copyright 2016, for use in the forensic science classroom, grade 12, for the 2016-17 school year.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Any discussion?
Is this, is this a new course? I don't guess I-
Yes.
It is, that's what I thought.
It's a super class.
Okay.
And so.
So you said, you said, I said, is it a new course, and you said something else, sorry.
It's a super class, which Syracuse University Project Advanced, yep.
Yes, yes, okay, great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, so we need to talk a little bit about summer schedule stuff. So the August business meeting usually takes place after we get the tax rate, which is usually sometime around August 15.
Yeah, the middle. Last year, it was August 18. This year, the Tuesday is the 16th, and that would work as far as the information goes.
Oh, the microphone.
Oh.
So should then, should we save August 16? That's kind of far away for, to know maybe people's schedules, but just to get it on the calendar. You will be unavailable.
And I'll be away, we're, like, really away, like-
Really away.
Like, in a place where there's no internet access or electricity. No, I will not be Skyping. And the week after that? The week after that, it's fine. You want to shoot for the 23rd?
Is that too late?
We could make that work.
We don't all have to be there.
Yeah, we-
I mean, that's the other thing, I mean, I know, we don't need all five of us, but I won't, I just wanted to say that I won't be there.
Because the 23rd is a little late, isn't it?
It's a little late to get the tax bills printed and out in the mail by September 1st, only because I'm, we're relying on the county to print them for two counties.
So let's stick with the 16th. So that would mean we have the July 5th meeting for the reorg, and then we have the August 16th meeting. Hopefully, that's all we have to meet about over the summer, not meeting about falling down modulars or anything like that. Okay, and then the other thing we need to just start talking about is the retreat dates, which I'd like to remind the public, is not a spa weekend for the board. It is an all-day meeting, where we talk about board stuff. Last year, we did a two-part, which I thought worked well. We did, like, part one over the summer, and then part two kind of in the fall, once we started getting going with some stuff. I think we did it in, like, September, if I'm remembering.
And that's when we set our goals, that was the second part.
And that was the goals, that's right.
And that was the weekend, it was a Saturday meeting, as I remember.
And that was a Saturday. So, and I think, I don't recall what we did in August, but it might be nice to do, like, an August evening, and then a Saturday in September, something? I don't know if you guys have any burning thoughts?
Well, I remember, was it the summer meeting was actually the longer meeting, right? I mean, that was multiple, it wasn't- That was all day, that was a long meeting. It was really, that was pretty all day.
Was that the Saturday?
Yeah, maybe that was a Saturday.
That was a longer one, and that did happen in the summer.
Yeah.
And then, I don't, to be honest, it was a summer.
And then we could do an evening meeting, could do a dinner meeting in September.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to, maybe I should throw some dates out via email, and you guys can yea or nay? Does that sound like a good idea?
Heidi and I will both be, I know, going to college at some time, so I guess we have to figure out those dates before we can come in.
Okay, but we're talking about a Saturday in August, and then maybe a midweek in September? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
A midweek, or, oh, an evening?
A mid, yeah, like a five to something. Okay. Okay, good. All right. Anything else? Any communication from the public?